Good evening. We've already called the meeting to order before going into executive session. Now we're reopening in open session and welcome to visitors. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass General law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting. Members of the public can access the meeting via Montague Community Television Broadcast. And we are happy to say we are having an opportunity for public participation by means of our Zoom. And we did reinstate the policy BEDH at our last meeting with the stipulation that participation would be by Zoom while we're doing the meetings by Zoom. Okay, and I believe Jennifer, as our secretary, is in charge of this section.
Hi, everyone. So just a couple of reminders for public participation. To just when you get, when we call on you, go ahead and turn on your mic. And keep it in mind that we are live. So when, when speaking, you know, about personal, personal situations, just know that this is being recorded and it's also on, being broadcast on the local television station. So we just had two that wanted to speak to us live tonight. We did get many emails and I will summarize those after. Is Jim Katsoulis on? Yeah, go ahead.
Jim, you're muted, I think.
Jen is receiving it.
It looks like he's on video and I still can't hear him. I can see him and he's on. The sound is not coming through.
Sounds not coming through.
Hi, Jim.
So we'll.
I think he's trying the mic right now.
Maybe a minute to figure that out.
You guys hear me now?
Yes, yes. Hi, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Cool. So can I just talk?
Yes. Is there any way you can amplify it just a little bit?
Yeah, probably. Can you hear me better now?
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, sorry about that. Giant microphone not working well. Um, yeah, okay, first, I just want to appreciate, I appreciate all you guys, what you're doing here. And I know this is kind of a challenging situation. I know there's no perfect solutions right now, so we're all kind of in the same boat here. But you guys are at the forefront of it and I'm in the public. But the first question I want to ask the committee is, I want everyone to think about like, what do the numbers have to be for us to say, okay, we're going to send people back to school? You know, so I know there's lots of stories out there, but we're, obviously, I know you're all looking at numbers and facts. So that's kind of the first thing I want to point out is what the numbers have to be for us to vote for hybrid. Because I know right now it's kind of between hybrid and remote is my understanding. And I'm 100% with hybrid at this point, simply because the numbers in this county seem so low. And the way I understand it, the vaccine, you know, maybe it'll be here by the end of the year, but that seems unlikely. So it seems really, there's a good chance that next year we could be here in this exact same spot. And the idea of doing a remote for a full year to me is terrifying. I have a third grader and a ninth grader this year. And the ninth grader is doing a little better, but the younger kids, I think, you know, the real danger right now, and I use that word specifically because when they don't see any other kids, they don't see their teachers, it's like they're in an isolation tank. And so when I look at our county, you know, which is, by the way, I think this county, and this town specifically, has proven that we take this seriously. Because as far as I know, we haven't had a positive case in two months in this town. Franklin County with all the towns averages about five and this week has zero cases. And so with the numbers so low, the potential risks seem relatively low with a hybrid model, especially when you compare them against the actual damage, I think, of keeping especially younger kids. I think, I don't know, I'm just making this up, but sixth grade and above, maybe they handle it better. But I can say for sure that the younger kids are just much more isolated. They're much more on their screens. And I can say for my kid, you know, a little bit emotionally, it's tough. It's really hard for him. And again, he's getting, academically, he's doing fine, we're keeping up with that. But I think it's the feeling of there's no teacher contact in real life. Again, the Zoom stuff is okay, and there's no kid contact. And there's no sense of school, you know? So I think there's a real damage going on here. And I think the idea of voting for remote right now, I just don't understand why that would happen. You know, so again, these numbers are low now. It wasn't like it was like two months ago, we were in a lockdown. We've been open for two months. We've had restaurants are open, stores are open, and the numbers are ver, literally zero, literally. And so I understand that teachers are nervous, but I think sometimes the national media gets in our head. And so speaking of national media, I look at the New York Times put out a little COVID checker. You can check it out on the New York Times where you put in your county. And even they say that you can reopen. And it doesn't, it's not surprising, there's zero cases here. So again, I ask you what the numbers would need to be for you to vote for the hybrid model. And the other thing I want to say is that sometimes I find myself saying, well, it's not fair to put teachers in a room with kids, a full, you know, full room of kids for seven hours at a time. But I'm assuming the hybrid model is not going to be that, you know? So I'm hoping, you know, again, that I think we're going to be in a hybrid model seems to be the model we're going to be using for the next year most likely. Like, I don't know, we're not going to be able to go back to full classrooms and full classes for the next year if there's not a vaccine. And so I feel like I'm kind of giving my vote for the hybrid model right now so that we can focus 100% on making it as successful as possible. Because the remote last year, and again, I'm not criticizing anyone, but the remote program last year for the last two months was so inadequate that it would have to improve by magnitudes to even be, to meet, even be considered a legitimate option. And so the hybrid option, again, I don't know a whole lot about the hybrids. I don't want, I don't know, want to talk about something I don't know. But I think that there's at least ways we can work. I mean, even if my kid could get into to see the teacher for an hour a week, like, that would be tremendously more beneficial than just purely remote. So again, I just wanted to throw my two cents in there. And I know we get so nervous and stuff, and I feel bad, you know, we've got two adults, my parents and my wife's father, that are in their 80s and they're both diabetic. So again, I'm not saying this as someone who's, you know, insensitive to, you know, the potential risk. But I think looking at the numbers in this area, I don't, again, I ask you this, what would the numbers need to get to? They can't go any lower. And so the only other thing would have to be, they'd have to be zero for months at a time to finally vote for the hybrid. So again, I think the remote is damaging and I think potential risks, there are real risks with the remote right now. And I think the potential risks just aren't there. So thanks for listening to me, I really appreciate it. Again, I recognize this is a hard choice and I wish you guys the best with it. But I just want to put my two cents in. So thanks for listening to me.
Thank you for joining us. And if you can follow along either to stay in the room listening or on the television, we are going to be discussing a lot of this later in the meeting. So please, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and up next is Carl Dur. Muted.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name is Carl Dur and I'm the president of the Gil Montague Education Association. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes. Hi, Carl.
Hi, Carl.
Dear school committee members, after six months of living in a pandemic, tremendous uncertainty about the disease and its effects remains. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education declares three feet of separation with masks is safe. Yet the CDC continues to advise a minimum of six feet. A recent New York Times article details an experiment which shows that infected aerosol droplets can infect cells traveling a distance of 16 feet. The variation in opinion among scientists and leaders is compounded by more unanswerable questions like the success of consistent mask wearing compliance among students and adults. Consistent means not pulling down the mask below the nose or lifting the edges for relief. Additionally, in any in-person scenario, students will need to remove masks to eat. The Gil Montague Education Association has requested information on the HVA system in our buildings, but to date, we have not received answers. The absence of this information adds one more very important uncertainty to the lengthy list. The uncertainty extends to a broad range of people, not only those in high-risk categories. Megan McCarthy of the Washington Post points out that at least seven elite college athletes have developed an inflammation of heart muscle that can have severe consequences, including sudden death. McCarthy continues by referencing a German study of 100 recovered patients in which 78% showed cardiac involvement. Many of these patients are expected to recover eventually, but no one knows how many will fully recover or how long recovery will take. Dr. Anthony Fauci echoed McCarthy's concerns yesterday stating, "In individuals who are young and otherwise healthy, who don't require hospitalization but get sick and symptomatic enough to be in bed for a week or two or three and then get better, they have residual symptoms for weeks and sometimes months. If staff return in-person learning and suffer these effects, how will potential extended recovery or permanent disability be compensated? How will families cope if members of their families suffer these longer-term effects? Returning to in-person learning will increase the likelihood of these outcomes." None of our educators would choose to teach remotely except when they believe doing so will place students, families, the community, and staff at risk of illness, disability, or possibly death. Due to our current circumstances though, 70% of educators in the Gil Montague Regional School District believe we need to teach remotely this year. The conflict in the mind of staff members was most pointedly brought home when one of our teachers broke down in tears because they would have to choose between keeping their family safe rather than returning in-person instruction to the students they love. As indicated in 40 letters submitted by staff supporting remote learning, several of our staff members have family who have died of COVID. So while many believe death is statistically unlikely, COVID mortality has nonetheless already touched the families in our community. 39% of our staff report belonging to this high-risk mortality category, while 45% indicate that they have a household member in a high-risk mortality group. In total, 70% of staff are or have a family member in a high-risk category. One staff member pointed out that they will have to divide their house and remain isolated from their family for the rest of the year. If we return in-person to in-person teaching, I don't know if other families with at-risk members have the ability to make such arrangements. If students become infected at school, will families be able to isolate their children? Or will they have to risk infecting at-risk or other members of their family? The introduction of one infected individual into the community can lead rapidly to large numbers of infection as the startling instance at Bay State Health illustrated recently. At lunch, one individual infected 36 others in a few days in a facility designed and staffed by healthcare workers. 23 highly-trained, regularly-screened adults in a facility designed to minimize disease spread quickly succumb to infection. Our institutional defenses are not nearly as robust, so we can expect a proportionally poor outcome. Even if we're willing to accept these risks, the likelihood that we will join the ranks of institutions across the country that have had to revert to remote learning is high. Not only because one infected individual can rapidly spread the disease, but because overlapping symptoms from cold and flu season will likely make day-to-day operations grind to a halt. Are necessary, out of necessary and recommended caution, one staff member could easily be absent for 10 to 15 days due to such symptoms. It will not require many comparable instances to make delivering instruction impossible for a large number of students. Should one or more of the effective staff members be a nurse, the continuing of operations will be that much more in jeopardy. Starting and continuing with remote learning is the best method to ensure continuous instruction for the largest number of our students. And so many people have stated before this pandemic does not present any clearly good choice. However, the riskiest choice for students, families, the community, and staff is in-person instruction. Our educators received a great deal of positive feedback about the remote learning period in the spring, and we also received some negative responses. Regarding those negative experiences, we would like to point out that the switch to remote learning occurred without warning or preparation. The state and the district imposed strict limits on what we could offer and how we could evaluate students during that time. The parameters for remote education are considerably different now. Educators across the district are already working on ways to make remote work considerably better, and we have enough time to refine our remote educational offerings before the resumption of instruction. We know remote learning is overall the safest approach to instruction at this time, and we feel confident we can improve on the weaknesses present in the spring. Therefore, the staff of the Gil Montague Regional School District urges you, the school committee, to choose remote learning as we return to educating our students in the fall. Sincerely, Carl Dur and Kelly Gobio on behalf of the educators of the Gil Montague Education Association. Thank you.
You've got the mute going there, Jane.
You're muted.
Yep, I probably should unmute myself. Thank you. Jennifer, I believe you were going to give us a little information on people who wish to just send some ideas in but not to speak in person?
Yeah, so we had many emails. I did share them all with the committee. So you have all the information that I have at this point. But just for the public summary, I wanted to give just a really brief summary of those emails. So we heard from a variety of stakeholders and a variety of opinions. I heard from nurses, teachers, paras, parents, grandparents, community members, with a wide range of opinions on whether we should stay remote or move to hybrid or have full in-person. Many had questions about IEP students and how their needs would be met. Some said they had an IEP student that had a good experience with the remote learning. Some said that they did not have a good experience with the remote learning. Can you guys hear me? Does my connection's unstable?
Yes, yep.
Okay, it said my connection was unstable. So the IEP student, some, some reported was a success. Improvements could be made, but it was successful and possible to be successful. And then others said that it was very difficult for them. People had questions regarding specific metrics that we would be using to make our decisions, testing, screening, what we would do for those and what the testing locally looks like. Also, the mask requirement and how it would all work, the process for cleaning, the schools, the seating arrangement. Parents just would like to know what it's all going to look like and what's going to happen if somebody does come down with symptoms. We had support for full remote. We had support for full in-school and for hybrid. Some say we have low enough rates locally that we should open due to concerns on socialization, physical activity, and educational concerns as well. For hybrid, some wanted to note that it's not going to look like it looked prior to COVID. It will be a different, different feeling and a different process being in school. And they want families and students to be aware that it's not going to go back to exactly what normal was. It's going to be the new normal. There are some that said that they will not do remote. They can't due to their job or they just don't feel that they should be needing to teach their students at home, even if it's, you know, a district-led plan with teachers. They just feel that it's something that they can take on. And then also some said they needed flexibility because they're working if we do go with a remote model. So that is kind of the summary is, it's a lot of both sides of the answer. There's no, there's no good answer. Everybody has different needs, but mostly parents just want flexibility. They want to know what's happening. They want to feel safe. And we just need to do the best to answer all the questions we can and, and keep everybody safe and engaged. That's the summary, but everybody got the emails, so you can read them at length. And we probably had about maybe 15 emails. And that's it, Jane.
Thank you, Jennifer. Heather?
By the way, Mike is still on. He's just turned off his video so that he has more bandwidth. And Jen, I will let you know that there's a teacher online to speak. However, I don't believe, I believe there were some rules around that in this particular participation. And I just don't know, I'm not clear as to what they are. So I'm just letting you know. In your notes, I have written who it is, so you can call on her if it's okay. And if not, then we'll make arrangements otherwise.
I guess, Jane, I'll leave that to you.
It's still public participation. I guess, you know, it really helps if people indicate that before we begin the session. But I expect we can as, as long as the comments are brief and she's here. I think that would be okay if no one objects. Okay. You let her in, please. Okay.
Sorry, Jen, did you want to call on her or do you want me to? I'm fine.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, Mary-Kate, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I did not realize that I was doing this incorrectly. I had sent an email to the union folks and I guess, I don't know. I guess I just got the process wrong.
Oh, that's okay. Jennifer is the gatekeeper, just for future reference.
Okay, sorry about that, Jennifer. So my name is Mary-Kate Smith-Tuprey and I'm a special education teacher, specifically a therapeutic special education teacher at Sheffield Elementary School. And I just wanted to speak specifically to programs like mine and to special ed in general, as well as what Desi and other folks are calling most vulnerable groups. Because as you'll know, in many districts, remote plans, including our own, our phase-back approach always has special ed and our youngest learners coming back first or coming back even if other students are not. The language has been that they're prioritized for in-person learning. But I see this as a really problematic thing as well. And so I'd just like to share a bit of the letter I wrote. I won't read the whole thing, but, but I do want to focus, like I said, on why we need to commit to 100% fully remote model for all students, including our youngest learners and those that Desi and others repeatedly refer to as our most vulnerable, i.e. students with disabilities, those who are English language learners, as well as some other students in outstanding circumstances like those in foster care. Unfortunately, this is a really ableist narrative that's actually further segregating our students. And it puts them further at risk for failure. And it's using this idea of saviorism to smother these kids into ways that are not going to help them learn better, but makes the people who feel like they're serving them feel better when it actually puts them and their teachers at greater risk. It is pitting parents and teachers, both of whom fiercely love these kids, against one another. And it is putting the health and safety of students, educators, par educators, and others in danger in favor of what I like to call social justice theater. Data shows that COVID-19 disproportionately affects Black and Latinx folks, people living below the poverty line, people who are obese, those who suffer from chronic stress, and those who are medically fragile or who have other pre-existing conditions. Our ELL and special education students and their families overwhelmingly fall into some of these categories. But the state wants us to use these students and use us, their special education teachers, as litmus tests for in-person learning during a pandemic in part to appease those threatening lawsuits for compensatory services. As a therapeutic special education teacher, I'm really horrified by this move. My and my students' health and safety is not a cheap Band-Aid. If instead we had the funding, resources, and planning time needed to develop fully remote learning, we could actually better and more safely support our students. It would allow us to continue to teach and support our kids and families from a place of love rather than putting us in the horrible position of approaching each day and each student from a place of fear. This position will inevitably cause us to view each dysregulation, big behavior or outburst not as a developmentally typical response in extraordinary times that needs our love and support, but as an aerosol expelling direct threat to us and our families. In their guidance for special education, Desi doesn't even pretend that we're able to both stay safe and provide best practice instruction for our students. It offers gowns and face shields and constant change of clothes as alternatives to social distancing and appropriate PPE for students, many of whom have disabilities that make it more difficult or even impossible for them to wear a mask or to learn without hands-on assistance. It does not speak to the fact that, especially in sub-separate programs like mine, not only multiple children, but multiple adults are working in very close proximity. It does not acknowledge that many of the paraprofessionals in these programs, and often us teachers as well, have second jobs to supplement our dismal public school paychecks, which puts us and our students and our colleagues at greater risk for transmitting the virus. If it is deemed that schools have not met health and safety requirements for general education students and teachers to return to the building, then special education staff and teachers, teachers and students, as well as ELL and our youngest learners cannot be expected to return either. We must commit to supporting conditions that are not just safe for some, but are safe for all. That's it from me.
I think Jane's frozen, so just say thank you for sharing those thoughts. And I guess I'll wait for her to come back. There you are, Jane. I think you were frozen, so I wanted to thank her for sharing her thoughts.
Thank you. You read my mind.
Well, like participation.
Yes, thank everyone and thank everyone for the letters that they, and emails that they sent as well. And next on our list, important events. We really have nothing in particular to focus on at this moment. This is a special meeting, so we're going to keep our discussions limited to a couple of items. Next, we have the superintendent's report. And Superintendent Beck has some information for us that he'd like to share.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to, sorry.
I'm sorry, Bill. Bill?
I just, I read a, I want to thank Jen for a tremendous job in receiving all of that stuff and putting it together at the end there. I read a lot of the letters as well. And there were, there was one that was received yesterday at 10:39 in the morning. I don't know if the person wants to be public or not, but, so I'm not going to do that. But in reading it, in the third to last paragraph, she had written without something, something, something. This is a proponent of full in-school learning. I believe that she meant in that paragraph to use the word with, not without. And it makes a difference in comprehending because if she says without, it contradicts her argument. And then secondly, in the sixth paragraph, there was a mention, this is just for everyone, that children are more likely to be asymptomatic. But it, in that context, it was not dealing with the fact that asymptomatic people are spreaders. So the fact that asymptomatic people are that way doesn't mean that they're, it's safe to be with them. And I just wanted to point those two things out. And lastly, if I can add one other thing, my, one thing that would be a lot of fun, because we've been hearing all the negatives to going back to school. And I think that it would be really fun to hear some positives from the teachers and educators in particular, who are, I don't know if this is shut off or what.
No, you're on.
My screen is just Zoom right now. Anyway, I think it would be fun for the people that are educating to do some presentations on what they're doing to make a remote or hybrid or back in class successful. And that would be kind of an up conversation to contrast against all of the negatives which are clearly out there. Thanks a lot. Sorry to take so much time.
Okay, that's okay. Thank you. Ryan?
Thank you. Sorry about that, Bill. I knew that you had your hand up from before. So in the family survey, we were pleased to get of the 936 students that we have enrolled in the district, that we got 631 total responses. So just about two-thirds of the families responded to the survey. In the survey, 35% of the families responded to the survey indicated that they have a high-risk child or a high-risk family contact in their home. 7.2% wanted to start hybrid and stay hybrid. 37.1% wanted to start hybrid and then move to full in-person. So that's 44.3% that wanted to start hybrid. 20% of families wanted to go fully remote and stay remote. And those are families who have begun to contact us indicating that they have something, you know, a serious underlying health condition in the home that they're concerned about sending their kid in and would likely want to stay remote as long as the pandemic was still a public health threat. And then 34.7% wanted to start remote and move to hybrid. So there's 54.8% of families prefer to start remote. So there's a little bit of a majority on that side. But as we can see, you know, for the districts, for the school committee, it's a difficult decision because of the fact that neither of these models is perfect. Neither of them, you know, really serve families well, because it's just very different in terms of managing your children at home. As far as metrics, you know, we still haven't decided specifically, and we'll talk about this tomorrow, specifically what metrics we're going to use to decide on. We did publish that the CDC's less than 5% testing rate in the Commonwealth is probably not a great metric to use, because it doesn't touch regional data. And in Franklin County, in our two towns, the most recent report we have is August 12th on the CDC dashboard, which means the most updated case counts for the area will come out tomorrow. And they have individual case counts in that report. It is linked to our district's plan, so everybody should just be able to get in. And it's within the first couple of pages, on the first page of text of the plan is the COVID-19 dashboard. And if people go into that tomorrow morning, that you'll get a sense of, you know, the previous data, for the previous 14 days leading up to August 12th, had seven cases in Greenfield, still zero cases in Gil and Montague, 12 cases in Amherst, 18 in North Hampton, less than five in Sunderland, less than five in Hatfield, and less than five in Deerfield. I also want to keep in mind that NMH is currently still planning to bring students from all over the world back to Gil and other private schools such as Eaglebrook and Deerfield Academy are also schools in the area. Trying to watch case counts from where our staff live and from where our school choice students come from will be important. And the best that that report can give us is data every two weeks. And I certainly hear, you know, the comments that were made tonight. And certainly, we asked the question as well amongst ourselves as superintendents when we collaborate, well, if we don't go back now, well, then when? And I'm not, the recommendation that I made in terms of going remote is partially based on not knowing the answer clearly to that from my perspective and just my personal opinion and the conversations that we've had amongst one another as area superintendents. But for us in our district, one of the things that we still would like to work on are some of the areas of the facility. And part of the, part of what we're waiting for is a little bit more of our personal protective equipment that we would need to provide for teachers, in particular, those who would be in smaller cohort situations. Some of it has just recently arrived and we're still waiting for some of it to come in. And we're not sure whether or not we're going to have it by September 14th. So that does enter into my recommendation to start remote. So that's basically all that I wanted to share in terms of the data. The most updated data in terms of total case counts in the area, it actually gives every town across the state a 14-day count. Will come out tomorrow. As folks know, we know that the virus is slightly more present in the area, even as the state has sort of leveled off, isn't quite declining yet in terms of daily case counts. But we know that, you know, there were four in a school in our region in Athol just within the last week. So those case counts are definitely going to change and we're going to want to take a look at where those are. But unfortunately, we only get that information every week. So we may want to consider the idea of, if those case counts come out on Wednesday mornings, we may want to look at Wednesday evenings rather than Tuesday evenings for school committee votes when we're going to make decisions. That way, we're as close to the updated data as possible. And that's it in terms of things that I wanted to be able, oh, I apologize. We are currently waiting also while our HVAC system has been upgraded and several repairs have been done. A schedule has been put in place to increase the frequency of the changes of filtering, as well as maintenance on belts and other types of things that are in that system. We didn't feel comfortable bringing, you know, many more people into the building until we had this other contractor come in and do air quality testing, check other levels of filtration to see how high we could go or should go. And of course, trying to balance that with the return of fresh air into the room. Also waiting for the remaining tents to come into school so that we could conceivably plan some phased-in outside construction. And we're also working on the cohorts. And we've identified those students who are in higher need populations so that we could conceivably begin, you know, slowly in bringing people into the building with the confidence that we've taken the steps and every step that we conceivably could to more substantially risk the chance of transmission of the virus in the schools.
Thank you. Does anyone on the committee have any questions or comments for Superintendent Beck? Heather and then Bill?
So as you know, I was an engineer and a math teacher, so data is my wheelhouse.
Can you magnify your volume a little bit?
I don't think it's any different than it's been. I'll lean closer. Is that any better?
That's better. That's better.
So I just want to start with everything we've already heard. However, there are a few sites you can go to, mass.gov. Of course, the Massachusetts one that the superintendent was discussing. We have the New York Times and we have the WHO and we have Harvard Global Health Institute. So let's start with that one. The Harvard Global Health Institute recommends it's feasible to go back to school safely with the precautions that we have in place at 25, fewer than 25 cases per 100,000. We are below five. The CDC, we meet their guidelines. The WHO, we meet their guidelines. We have no cases in our communities. Our children are in our communities. I have no other horse in this race, except that my kids need to get this. They need to be in person. I didn't realize how bad it was until my son pulled out his bag from last year and started going through it and was just so animated. And he just, he needs some, something. And I understand, to me, by the way, these recommendations are for opening more than hybrid. They're opening full. I'm very comfortable with starting hybrid. If we go off of data, we don't have the cases here. We need to start here. We need to be, in reality, seven athletes that have very rare cardiovascular disease is not a reason to not open our schools. And I'm sorry, but we are all living off the fear of something that is terrible that is not affecting our communities right now. We need to start. Will the numbers change? Most definitely. And I know this. If we could even start with just the youngest kids for part-time, for a few hours, or mostly outside as much as possible and inside, I don't see how we cannot start with that. It's irresponsible. We owe the children of our communities this. Our taxpayers are paying for this. Of course, I want everyone to be safe. In all transparency, that was my husband speaking. I did not tell him any of that. I don't discuss things with school committee outside of what's public with him. It's just really important to stay focused on the reality of the data and what is going on in our communities. Very, very important. And it is so hard to be dissuaded from that if you are on social media. If you are watching regular media, you need to look at the data. You need to look at our hospitalizations. You need to look at the history of the, we haven't had a new case in either of our communities since June 7th, July 7th. I mean, you just need to start from there and not starting from a place of fear. And then, yes, have the preparation to be ready to change that. Yes, flexibility is going to be a part of this in any way. But we need to look at reality. Reality is important.
Thank you. I think Bill was next.
I'm sorry, this is unrelated to that. I wanted to ask Brian, how long is the analysis on the HVAC system going to take? If you have a notion of that. And then, secondly, is the amount of filtration that's required, cutting back on the volume of air that can come in and out through the system? So essentially, our system as it exists, which did not take into account this pandemic, is inadequate? Or is it adequate for serious upgrade?
That's part of the assessment that this company is going to do. We're in the process of negotiating the contract and I'm hopeful that tomorrow we'll have a timeline from them that I can share as part of the, whatever I'm sending out, you know, to the public to give them an idea or at least share with the school committee when we anticipate that all that will happen. But that's part of trying to strike that balance rather than just jamming in clean filters that meet the CDC's base guidelines. We wanted to do a more thorough examination of the system and really follow the recommendations of that company, trying to get as close as we can to, one, better levels of filtration while simultaneously making sure that enough fresh air is being circulated. So yes, a filter will restrict and there may be a limitation on the the type of filter, how strong the filter can be. One, because our machines might not be able to handle it, but we don't know that. So that's part of what we need to take a look at. And the second thing is how much air will be restricted by that. And we don't know that. We want to bring in a company that, you know, of course, they're outdoing every other school right now as well. So, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to get them in before the opening.
And we're talking about all our schools?
Yes.
All the building? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt your thing, Heather.
Thank you. I think Cassie was next.
So can everyone hear me okay? Come back?
Sort of.
Can I, I'm going to call in on my phone, Jane, so if somebody else would like to speak.
Okay. Maybe just before we get into this, I just need to remind people that this is the portion of the meeting that is a school committee business meeting. And I know we've made it so that people can listen in if they're not able to follow the meeting on the television, the cable. But it's not set up so that we can just have people in the audience, as it were, even a Zoom audience, just enter into the conversation. It's really our business meeting, people that would like to participate at public participation. That's wonderful and we appreciate that. But we can't be taking other people's comments during the business meeting as we go along. I hope people understand that. Thank you. Haley, would you like a turn while Cassie's setting up?
Sure. I just wanted to talk about metrics and my own personal journey with that. As a parent and as a leader in the district, I'm very concerned about the effect that lack of in-person school had on children and families this past spring. My family personally struggled with remote learning. A few weeks ago, I was convinced that we had to come back in person as much as possible for the fall and I was prepared to fight for it. But my thinking has evolved. Over the past few weeks, I've been watching the rest of the country. I've been reading conflicting studies on how efficiently children spread the disease. I've been having conversations with parents and teachers and reading through survey results and letters. And I've been attending the pandemic response advisory committee meetings. So about metrics, our metrics do look good in Franklin County. And our reason to start remote would not be because of the numbers that we're seeing. The numbers are looking good. For me, the metric that I want to see improve is testing. If we're getting, you know, nasal swab tests that take four to 10 days to come back, that is essentially useless. We need widely available cheap spit tests that kids and everyone can do a couple of times a week and get basically instant results within the day. That's how we're going to come back to any sense of normalcy at all. And it still won't be the old normal. It'll be the new normal. So, you know, I think before a vaccine, that's what I'm pinning my hopes on, is a quick test. Because of that and because of, I feel like we don't quite have our ducks in a row between the HVAC and the PPE and the tents, I would like to recommend that we start remote. I do have serious reservations about remote. I think there's no substitute for a person who's there for the kids. So that's my piece for now.
Thank you, Cassie. Are you set?
Yep. You can probably hear me better now. So first of all, I have to say that, you know, if we're going to talk about metrics, I have close family friends that have tested negative and later shown to have antibodies. I have, I currently have an aunt and uncle in Greenfield that are battling this. It is in our area and I think that we don't get all of the data that we need. And when I say my aunt and uncle are battling this, they're very ill. They're not asymptomatic. I was thinking today, and, you know, I have three kids. And in the spring, it was incredibly difficult. I'm a teacher myself in a neighboring district and I felt like I failed my own kids. It was really, really hard. But I think that what people don't realize is that, you know, we had the state telling us we couldn't grade children. And we had the state, you know, telling us, be easy on them, you know? And I think it was easy to kind of think that that was a district decision. But we now know that that's something that didn't work. And I've been lucky enough to be part of a lot of thoughtful conversations with the teachers. And I think that, you know, there's, we've had the thoughtful conversations we need to have about how to make remote work. It's not going to be ideal. But I think right now, that's really our only choice. And lastly, you know, my youngest is a special ed kiddo and he receives services. And he struggles with executive functioning and he struggles with social boundaries, you know? And we had a really rough year a couple of years ago with him. And he was struggling in school and his teacher at the time and him did not really connect. And it was just an overall bad instance and he felt like the bad kid. And I think about if I put him in a classroom right now and I told him to stay six feet away from all of his peers and to not share his toys, he would constantly be reprimanded for not being able to follow those guidelines and he would feel like the bad kid again. And as much as I want my kids in person and I want to be back in my classroom, I just, I don't think it's safe to do it and I'm not willing to risk that. And I think about the map, lastly, this is the last thing I'll say, the map that the state sent out either last week or the week before and it had hotspots. And I think about the map, lastly, this is the last thing I'll say, the map that the state sent out either last week or the week before and it had hotspots. You know, I think Granby was one, Belcher Town was one. We have teachers that drive from these areas to come to our schools. So essentially, you know, if we were in the bubble of Montague and nobody ever left or came in, you know, it would be one thing to say we have no cases. It's fine. Let's do this. But that's not that way and, and we can't be sure that everyone's being as safe as they need to be. I just don't think, I don't think it's worth the risk at this point. That's all.
Thank you, Jennifer.
At the last meeting, this superintendent had identified some dates where we might reassess. Right now, I fully support starting remote because we're, we're just not ready. We don't have everything in hand that's been ordered. I think that it's just unrealistic to ask anybody to go in without having all of the PPP and proper evaluations done prior to starting in the building. So I'm in support of that, but I just wanted to kind of clarify and also put out there that we have checkpoints identified to bring this up. So it's not gonna be something that we stop discussing tonight. Right now, the focus is what are we gonna do until what? I'm not sure exactly what the first date was. Maybe superintendent can let me know, let everybody know what. So we're voting tonight based on how do we start for this first chunk of time? Is that, is that?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the first date is September 8th because I felt like, you know, starting by the time we got to that point, we will know whether or not, you know, the governor's, the governor just stopped moving forward through phase three. He didn't take a step back and close down the state. And so we did see some case counts go up a little bit out here in the wake of the spike in the state. So I was anticipating that by the time we got to September 8th, you know, we would see national numbers declining with mitigation efforts. We would see hopefully cases declining in Massachusetts and therefore case counts that were able to get weekly in our surrounding towns declining. So that was the idea of looking at September 8th with a, a decision, making that decision. And I think I put October 1st as the, or October 5th as the time we would come back. Because we, we need just a little bit of lead time to hire some additional staff before we would shift to hybrid. I, I also avoided specifically in recommending those dates, you know, I didn't want to do the 25th because we're gonna have relatively similar data. There's just not enough time that's expired for any mitigation efforts either nationally or locally to take effect. But the other part is I, I didn't want to do what some school districts did, which said, we're not gonna review this until November. We're not gonna review this until, you know, some, some school district said we're going remote for the first semester. And I don't necessarily think that we need to do that at this point. So I didn't make that recommendation.
Jennifer?
Thank you for reminding me of those dates. I am a little concerned. So if we, if we did decide to move into another phase on the, on September 8th, we would still be remote for the first couple of weeks and it wouldn't start. If we voted at that point, it wouldn't start until October. Cause I just want to make sure families have enough notice when we're making changes and staff have enough time to be prepared. So, but if we're, so tonight, we're specifically just voting how we would start until October 5th. And then we would be reevaluating and having another discussion on around, on or around September 8th. It's maybe, I also think it's a good idea to maybe change our conversations and our meetings, our public meetings to be on Wednesday. So we have data that's fresh.
So I also, yeah, so September 8th, September 22nd and October 6th, I have it recommended as a standing agenda item. And as long as, it's probably gonna have to be for the entire time that it's a, a public health threat. Unless we're in a situation where I'm contacting the school committee because I've made a decision to close the school due to a massive outbreak and inability to staff the building. So that would be assuming that we were, had some type of in-person at that point. But I think it's gonna have to be a standing agenda item every school committee meeting that we have. And as long as we have, you know, roughly three weeks of lead time from the point of that decision, that gives staffs, families and, and us as the admin team to hire the additional people that we would need to shift to that model. It might not be as necessary or it might not be possible for us to do it if we're shifting backwards. If we're, say, we're in some sort of in-person or, or hybrid model that, you know, if we have to shift back into remote, that could obviously be quite immediate.
Heather?
So, are the numbers did spike and they came back down without anything being closed back down? Just to be clear, our reproduction rate is considerably below one. It's 8.83, which means it's getting lower. Besides that, could I please get a specific metric that we need to meet? Because we are living with COVID from henceforth. It goes nowhere. Even if a vaccine came out, how many people are willing to take it right away when considering the safety? Testing for typical ones is so long and this one will be so fast for a disease we don't know very much about. So I'm not, I'm just not convinced the vaccine is what we lay our future on. COVID doesn't go away. We need enough, there will always be people in our community that now have COVID, always and forevermore. And so I, I just, what is, what gets us back to school, even partially?
Okay, I was frozen for a minute there. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, thanks. Brian, did you want to say anything at that point or not yet?
Oh, no, Heather, I don't know if, I thought that was a, sort of a rhetorical question. Because I, you know, I certainly did acknowledge that our numbers are low. And I'm not, I'm not making this recommendation exclusively based on the numbers. I'm making this recommendation based on our, our preparedness or my anticipation of our preparedness for September 14th. And if I felt like we weren't gonna be prepared beyond September 14th, you know, I'm hopeful that all of those things will be done by the time kids are ready to learn or even before that. So that by the time we get to September 8th, that we can both look at the data and I, you know, I can express a sense of confidence that we've taken the steps that we need to substantially reduce the likelihood of transmission in the building.
So the numbers don't need to change in our community. We're just, you're just waiting for, we, our HVAC already meets CDC requirements, correct? And we're just waiting for further.
Yeah.
So that just seems general to me. That's all.
Yep. I understand.
I think Mike was next and then Cassie.
Thanks. I actually had the COVID thing and really the only remaining symptom is my short-term memory is crap. So if I'm in the middle of a, of a rant and, and forget what I'm talking about, you'll know why. Now, I know some of you say that's nothing new, but trust me. I think it's, well, first I wanna, so I see this was on the agenda later in the meeting, but it seems like we're gonna tackle it now.
I guess.
Belonging the agony, if you wanted to move it around some, but otherwise I'll just move forward. The, the in-person and hybrid models are not gonna be just like school. They're not gonna be anything like what we used to understand as school. That doesn't mean that they won't be better for SEL and that kind of stuff. But it's, it's, we're not saying should we go back to the regular old school that worked so well or should we do remote or hybrid? Remote and hybrid are gonna be very complicated. Kids aren't gonna be together. It's gonna take 90 minutes, we understand, for kids in elementary school just to wash their hands and eat through the course of a day. So there are, we'll be giving up, there are compromises to be made in that model as well. Just, just, it's important to keep that in mind. It may be that remote will be the most effective education model because of the absence of some of that stuff. That's a maybe. We don't have proof of any of that. As far as the metrics go, we have very low numbers and, and if every, all things were equal, we'd say, okay, they're being safe, let's go back out. But I, I mean, my understanding is we have relatively good numbers because we have kept isolated. So whatever we do from now on is new ground. Whatever we've been doing cannot be, in my opinion, cannot be projected upon what's gonna come after this. Because now we're gonna have, if we go full classroom, for example, we'd have about half of the households in the district in our buildings for seven hours a day, every day. And as people have mentioned, these people, you know, some teachers and others are coming from all over the place. Parents have jobs for which they travel, they come and they go. It's gonna be a whole different exercise. And I don't think the information from one model are applicable to the other. I could be wrong, but I'm just explaining what, you know, what I'm basing my opinion on. So that concerns me. In terms of, I mean, if, if I were trying to design a system that would spread the virus, I would invent the public schools. And that concerns me too, because we're, we're creating a vector hub and we'll have connections by way of transfer from other communities. Considering 1,000 kids plus a couple of hundred teachers and all the families, we're all gonna be exposed. Everybody in town will be exposed to everything that comes to town. And while, you know, we have all sorts of anecdotal evidence from international experiences, some good, some awful. We have track record right here in the good old US of A of this not working out well. Now granted, our, our kids are not likely, especially elementary schoolers, to be out wild partying like at Holy Cross. Well, I mean, I wasn't there. I shouldn't generalize. I don't know what they were doing, but there was a lot of them doing it and without masks. And that's not the sort of thing that is likely to happen here. But once we get into school, all of the, the current information is basically off and we'll be plowing new ground. Which has been said is something we're gonna have to do anyway someday, no doubt about it. But I mean, at the moment, and I think it's also important to point out that we did not schedule this pandemic. If we were gonna, this is gonna be our pandemic, we'd have probably done it in the summer. Would have been much more practical for school districts if we'd have done this over the summer. We're all responding to a thing that was foisted upon us. This was nobody's idea. And no one group is responsible for solving the problems of another group. I mean, one of our issues, we have concerns about mental health and basically the federal and state governments have come to the conclusion that it's cheaper and easier to provide these services through schools, which is generally true except in a pandemic when the buildings are closed. So a lot of the secondary and tertiary concerns we're facing are not related to schooling, but related to the poor decision-making in government. Not to mention that we have no federal response to this epidemic or pandemic or disease, virus, whatever, to this day. So if the worst case comes to the worst case, we will not be getting PPE. We will not be getting additional tests. We will not be getting any assistance from the federal government. So we're gonna be competing with every other school district for testing, for, for whatever resources we might need to protect ourselves or clean up the mess. We're gonna be in a free-for-all with every other district in the state and in the surrounding area. Now, that's a worst-case scenario. I'm not addicted to hyperbole. I don't intend, it's not my idea that we should decide this on who can make the worst possible, worst-case scenario. This is just facts. I mean, as far as I can see them. Cause there is no centralized plan. There is no central control. There is no central emergency supply of PPE. If things go south, we go south alone. That's my concern. Those are some of my concerns.
Thank you. I think Cassie was next and then Haley.
So I'm not a healthcare professional, obviously, and I, I wouldn't claim to be so. I don't know much about that area. But I do know that one of my children is severely asthmatic. And at his physical appointment a couple of weeks ago, I asked the doctor her opinion about what she would do if it was her child. And I said, you know, we, we haven't decided anything. But she made a good point and she said, the world shut down in March. And kids, for the most part, have been kept in their bubble. And I really do wonder what going back to in-person would look like. And that's just, you know, as a teacher, how many times has a kid come in and been like, I puked this morning? Or I had a fever, but my mom gave me, you know, Tylenol and it went away. Like this happens. And no judgment, because as a mom, I've sat there and looked at my kid and said, like, is this cold bad enough to stay home? It's a new world now. It's going to be different. But I don't think it's fair to trust the teachers to have to police this. And you know that they will because they're teachers and they do a million things that they aren't asked to do and shouldn't have to do. And they do it because they care. But I, I just, I don't think it's feasible to do in-person. And I, I just, you know, if we want to talk about data, we don't have any data because kids have not been in school since March. And we had a lot less cases in March. And I don't mean in this area. I mean throughout the country. So.
Okay, thank you. Haley?
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that we seem to have jumped agenda items and see if we wanted to make that official or?
You know, I know. I was thinking that myself. I'm trying to let the group do what the group needs to do. I, I mean, we, we certainly do have it later on the agenda. I was kind of hoping this might be questions or for Brian about his information. But if someone feels they need to not wait, that's okay too. Otherwise, we will circle on back.
I think I'd prefer to, to hit the agenda items before we get there.
Thanks, Haley. Okay. Brian, you provided us the information from the family surveys. Were we going to get some information from Carl on the teacher surveys? Or was that pretty much provided in Carl's previous information?
Yeah, I, I heard in his, in Carly, you cleared.
Carl, you, I mean, Brian, you keep breaking up tonight. We've got kind of a.
That's weird. I'm at the office.
Well, sorry, we can't afford the best there.
Sorry. Carl, so I was under the impression that you shared the, the data from the staff survey, the relevant data from the staff survey during your, your public comment?
Again, I can repeat it if anybody needs to hear it again.
I just wanted to double check if there was anything else, but I, I thought I heard it there. So. Okay, thank you. Next item is the business and operations report. I believe Joanne has some information to update us on the meal service we were asking about last time.
Yes. I met with Heather and we have a plan to continue the meal service until school starts. In the same format that we've been offering it all summer. So we're going to use the generous donation from Dean's Beans to help fund this. And our staff is coming back to work. So we've been working with summer staff for the past couple of months, but our regular cafeteria staff will be coming back on Monday. And so we're gonna start serving the same type of meals, the same, same locations, all the same drop points with our regular staff starting on Tuesday. So the only difference is we're gonna move our meal service from Monday, Wednesday, Friday to a Tuesday, Thursday, like we do during holiday weeks. And we're doing this because we need to bring them in on the first day and get them trained. And then we're gonna have Labor Day in there. And so that'll just allow us to keep it consistent for three weeks. Tuesday and Friday meals being served. We'll serve seven days a week right through the start of school.
Is that Tuesday and Friday, did I hear you say?
Tuesday and Friday, yes. So we're not sure what the rules are going to be just yet for the meal service. We know that the summer program can continue right through August 31st. And then at this point, what we understand is the rules are going to change. And so we don't know if we're gonna get reimbursed for those first two weeks of September. And so we don't know if we're going to get reimbursed for those first two weeks of September. We're hoping that there's more waivers. I know Desi has asked the federal government for waivers. So we're hoping that there will be more waivers and we'll get reimbursed the same way we've been getting reimbursed all summer. But if not, we're paying our staff that are going to be at work anyways. And then the Dean's Beans donation will be used to purchase food for this. So that is the plan right now, no change in any meal service until school starts September 14th. And we are hoping that we have some answers as to how lunch will be served moving forward.
Okay, so this week is still Monday, Wednesday and Friday?
That's right.
And starting next week, it'll be Tuesday and Thursday?
Correct.
So we'll need to try to get that information out as well as we can to the community.
She's already created the flyer and sent that out. So we will be posting that around town and putting it on the website and sending it out everywhere.
Okay, and there is, while I'm thinking of it there, Brian last time gave us some information on some statewide town halls that are being held to answer questions that people have about the food service. Desi, along with the whoever's in charge of nutrition at the state level, I'm forgetting what the acronym is. There were two meetings already I was unable to make, but I'm hoping tomorrow that I will be able to be in on that, the meeting. The next one is tomorrow between two and three, tomorrow afternoon. So if people are interested, I think it's still possible to, I, I don't think you have to sign up ahead of time. You just have to find, get the link. Bill, did you have a question or comment?
Yeah, both you and Joanne, you said it just at the end, Tuesday and Thursday, is it Tuesday?
I'm sorry, Friday.
Tuesday, Friday.
Yeah.
Thanks.
For some reason, when I say Tuesday, Thursday goes with it, I don't know why I do that. But I've done it before with this, so Tuesday and Friday, right?
That's right.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Joanne? So thank you for working on that and thank Heather for us as well. I know she and you have been doing quite an amazing job this summer keeping everyone fed. I think that's been, you know, when everyone talks about food insecurity, it certainly is everywhere. And we've been, I think the district has stepped up and been doing a really good job at helping people not have that one worry all the time. Thank you.
Jane, just one quick comment. I also wanted to say thank you to the numbers of restaurants and local businesses who have helped out. And I know that they themselves have been struggling, you know, in the, in the economy, but also have to give a huge debt of gratitude to Joanne and Heather and the many, many volunteers who are out there. Yourself, Sabrina, other people who are, you know, members of the committee or just citizens in town who have just stepped up to volunteer to get stuff out there. It's, it's going to be incredibly important, as you could see from the recent headlines in the, in the newspapers, local newspapers, that food insecurity is definitely on the rise. And so it might take more than just a really, really skilled person and Joanne going out there and finding the resources and then all those people stepping up. We might need to reach out to the community and get just sometimes individuals to step up. So I think that might be one of those things that we might want to keep on our agendas and just getting a report out on, on where we think things are going to go. I know they haven't given us the guidance yet, but I think it will be important to keep the community informed to know whether or not they'll need to step up and do something different.
Yes, thank you. Good point. Okay, next item on the agenda is we don't have any school committee reports again because this is a special meeting. Under business, our first item of business is potential votes on three unit contracts. The school committee needs to vote this evening on a new contract with Unit C as well as custodial and maintenance and cafeteria workers. So we have those three. Cassie, maybe with Joanne's help, could you, could we delineate each one? And then we need to vote officially on that?
Sure. Who, which one, is there one that you'd like to start with?
Anyone is fine.
Okay, and so we approved basically for FY21 and FY20 for Unit C. 2% for FY20. FY21 is 0.5%, but that is depending on chap, what chapter 70 comes in. And then FY22 is 1.5 for that unit.
So if chapter 70 comes in between 6,850,000 and 7,135,438, then the increase for Unit C is 1% in fiscal '21. And if chapter 70 comes in at or above 7,135,439, which is the governor's pre-COVID estimate, then the increase will be 2%. It, I did two, Bill, and so I have a little typo on my form. But Adam and Russell did correct me and tell me that it was 2%.
And that is for which year?
Fiscal '21. So we do know that our chapter 70 is falling within the range that it will be a 1% increase.
Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments about that? This is Unit C that we're discussing first. And could we just review the numbers, Joanne, for the three years?
So it'll be 2%, 0.5%. I'm a little confused, hold on, let me figure this out, make sure I'm not giving you the wrong information.
It's that sliding scale in the middle.
Right, it's a sliding scale in the middle, right, okay. So then fiscal '20 is 2%. Fiscal '21 is 0.5%. Fiscal '22 is 1.5%. Fiscal '21 changes with chapter 70 revenue changes. And so there's a range, it, it would be a 1% increase. And then if it's at or above the governor's pre-COVID estimate, it'll be a 2% increase.
And so that middle year fiscal year '21 will be decided when we get the official numbers?
Right.
Day, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? I will entertain a motion to approve the contract for Unit C as stated.
I'm moving.
Bill, thank you. Second, Mike, I think, yep. Any discussions? Okay, all those in favor? Timmy, if you could indicate by saying so.
I'm muted.
So I'm not sure, is, is Timmy still here?
That's what I was wondering.
Just, it's talking to me. Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
I'm with you, affirmative.
Affirmative, okay, so it looks to me as if we have a unanimous vote to approve Unit C. If I'm incorrect, please correct me. Okay.
Jane, I'd like to add one thing, that for Unit C, nobody will be placed below minimum, the state minimum wage in that unit.
Okay, right, the state minimum wage is increasing in January, is that correct?
That's right.
Yes, and we will stay above that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that's an important addition to that. Okay, so we have a unanimous vote on that. How about the cafeteria contract now?
So cafeteria was just a two-year, it was for FY20 and FY21. That is going to be a 2% increase for both years. And that follows the same thing Joanne just said in regards to minimum wage. And with, with this unit, we've sort of been chasing minimum wage because a couple of years ago, there were employees that were not making minimum wage, is it increased? So that is the increase that was approved for them.
Joanne, anything else to add to that?
The cafeteria unit has signed and returned their settlement agreement, so we have that signed.
Okay, thank you. I believe the one for Unit C is on the way.
Yes.
Any questions about cafeteria contract? In that case, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Cassie, we have a second. Mike, any, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I think I'm frozen.
We can hear you.
Right, but I don't see anybody moving, let's put it that way.
It is unanimous.
Oh, thank you. Every little bit helps. All right, so that's passed unanimously. And then custodial maintenance.
The custodial maintenance was only for FY21. And it will be a 1.5% increase, however, depending on chapter 70. As we stated before with Unit C, nope, just, oh, is it? Is it depending on chapter 70, that one, or is it just 1.5?
It's just 1.5.
Sorry, I was getting confused. So just the FY21, one year, 1.5.
Okay, anyone have any questions about that? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
All moved, moved to approve.
Okay, Mike moved. Second. Haley seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. It looks unanimous again. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item of business is the main item of business. And as people noticed, we had saw already sort of drifted into that territory, but it was sort of unvotable. We need to have a vote on the reopening plans at this moment. Maybe Brian, you could just remind us what your recommendation was and the parameters again, so people are clear about that.
Yeah, so my recommendation is to begin the school year for all students in the district remotely. With the intent of the school committee reviewing the remote plans on September 8th with, with an examination of the data and continuing to review at each school committee meeting the data and safety considerations for what model we can use.
And I think we've already received the information from the parent survey, the teacher survey. We have lots of letters from the community and the staff. And I think it, I, I just would like to start the continued discussion by saying it really, it really is a very stressful time for everyone involved. I think the community as a whole, it, it's really understandable that everybody is stressed a lot. This is come on, as Mike said, it was nobody's choice about this. And it was sort of, it happened so quickly. I think it was a difficult transition that was handled certainly as well as we could. And I think since then, people have been working hard to get everything ready to do whatever we need to do safely. I for one appreciate all the work everybody's been doing in the district. And I think I especially appreciate the input from everyone who has, you know, gone to great lengths to express their, their feelings and their opinions about this. We do appreciate that a lot. Okay, Haley?
Yeah, thank you to everyone who wrote and provided feedback and filled out all those surveys. I really read them all and it was really helpful to hear those perspectives. I also want to thank the Pandemic Response Advisory Committee, who has been meeting all through the summer more, more than weekly. And it includes members of the administration, teachers, community members, parents, facilities, cafeteria. It's really a huge team of people who've been working together to make sure that we have these plans that are specific and well thought out. So thank you, everyone who put in all that work. I have a question for Brian and Diane about, could you explain for us what our special ed and, and maybe high needs students' plans look like in remote?
So as of right now, I'll let Diane take this one. But we are, they're in the process of planning several different in-person models that we will present at a later date, probably at the very least by September 8th, if not next week. But Diane, do you want to talk about considerations for higher needs populations in remote learning?
Sure, thank you, Haley, members of the committee. As my admin team knows, we all have also wrestled with this, this guidance from the state and how to prioritize meeting the needs of particular populations of students. I think it was referred to as social justice theater earlier, which I haven't heard that expression before. And I, I'm not sure how to interpret that because I'm in my office each day and I hear from families who have very strong feelings about the supports and needs of their children and how to best, how to best meet those needs. Children who have struggled, as, as many of us have during this pandemic. So I do want to recognize the hard work of the superintendent, our administrative team, Carl, Kelly, the association, as we all have tried to work really collaboratively on how to meet the state guidance. So we have guidance around developing plans for reopening and we also have guidance around meeting the needs of priority populations. And so the state certainly has given us some criteria and folks are aware of that. Kids with disabilities, families who are homeless, children who are in foster care, which, of which there has been uptick of children placed in foster care during this pandemic. And what we are really looking to do is how, is, is again, work with our association, work with our teachers. Many teachers have come forward and have also expressed similar concern about how to best support the needs of children with disabilities. So I know that despite sort of balancing the concerns around health and safety risks, which we all take into account, there are also educators and specialists who are similarly concerned about how we can increase in-person instruction. So we are working with that state guidance document and we are working collaboratively with the teachers and thinking creatively about, you know, beyond telepractice, can we have, I'm hearing an echo, sorry, I'm finding it distracting, but can we have services that are phased in in person? Can we have all our protective equipment, as has been talked about this evening, so that reasonable safeguards are in place, so that we can begin to see children in small group with protective equipment in place? So the superintendent and I, our leadership team, the association, we are all working on what a phased-in plan might look like. And for folks listening at home, it might mean that students, I know our remote plans and our planning are available online, but as the good work of the principals has been, can we have students come in a couple of days? has been, can we have students come in a couple of days a week? Can we have students within a small cohort? How can we, again, safely, supportively meet the needs of these very complex learners? Including how to adapt instruction for remote learning. So maybe a combination, you know, as people have talked about, hybrid, where there's services being provided directly in person with safety equipment as well as remotely. And I'm distracted because I really do hear an echo every time I'm talking, so.
I believe that's Timmy's phone. I think Timmy needs to mute because she might have the TV going on in the background.
Okay. Yeah, it's about 12 hours into my workday, and so like the echoing also could be somewhat in my head. But again, I want to thank everybody. I know this is, people have been working really, really hard on this issue of how do we meet the needs of this population? And we do want to bring students in person to the best that we are able to safely do so. And Haley, I'm not sure, Haley, other members of the committee, I don't know if that answers anyone's question, so I'm feeling I'm a little short on answers, but not short on passion right now. Thank you.
Yeah, one of the other things that I can add to that too is that paraprofessionals are, the principals have worked really hard with one another, with Diane, to build schedules of assignments for the paraprofessionals and looking to communicate those out to target support specifically at students while we're in remote learning as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jane, you might be frozen, Mike?
You? Oh, well, I was going to make a motion to adopt the superintendent's recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion from Mike and
I second that.
And Cassie has seconded, and we will open it for any more discussion that people would like as well. Bill, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, you did. Brian, how are the, how are teachers collaborating? How are administrators collaborating physically? Are you all doing it remotely? Are some people getting together, talking with masks? I'd like just to sense out to the community of how our district leaders, as well as teachers, are themselves interacting.
Yeah, so we, we've been fortunate to have, you know, a good collaborative relationship with the union leadership and giving us, you know, they've participated in a couple of meetings where we invited them in as we got closer to putting together the draft plan, you know, early on and helping us to make decisions, giving us information about concerns that allowed us to be able to integrate those into either the plan itself or communications. And as we work on, you know, developing, further finishing the remote model and beginning the process of developing any any contingencies for in-person models. So for example, if we decided we were going to go to hybrid, but you know, our, it would be pretty easy for us as an administrative team to quarter our cohorts and start with a group one day a week rather than two days a week and just have that many fewer people in the building. And so I would anticipate that they'll continue to give input throughout this. I think they've made huge contributions even before I got here to ultimately what has become a more robust technological delivery system that will support remote and hybrid learning. And certainly, you know, puts us in a much better situation because again, everything was slammed on us in the spring, and we've had time to get input and feedback, not just from parents, but you know, a whole bunch of stuff. Thanks to Carl and Kelly communicating with their, their membership and getting us feedback.
But I mean specifically, are you all getting together physically?
No.
In person, or?
No.
All by Zoom, so you're all doing this planning remotely as well?
Yep, when we do get together, they're invited into our Zoom meeting and we pipe them into the room for those of us who are together. And occasionally, I've been stuck, I got stuck at home for a few days where I had to be remote, so.
I'm just looking for some, you think it's been a positive, in a way, it's been a positive outcome even though you're doing something remote?
Yeah, I think it's, it can be a challenge certainly to, to, to do these types of things remotely because everything takes three or four times as long. Because instead of saying something to somebody, you have to take the time to write out an email. Or, you know, go, go back and forth with something and send things back and forth. And the pace of trying to get stuff done has been really rapid. But I have found the union leadership to be really responsive, very constructive in putting, they've done a lot of research for us on things and given, shared ideas with us. And it's been, I found it to be really helpful. But it is harder to do it by Zoom than to do it in person. It's just been the safest way and the quickest way to be able to, for us to be able to connect in the absence of being able to connect in person.
Thank you.
Haley?
So yeah, I wanted to jump in and just thank Diane for putting in such careful thought about how we identify our students who qualify as high need in a remote academic setting. I know the group isn't necessarily straightforward, as in all who are getting academic support are all who are getting services. Some of those students may do perfectly well in remote, and others haven't been on the radar when school is in person, will surface as being high needs and remote. And I know that you've been looking at that, so, so thank you. If we are voting to start school remote tonight, I, I just want to emphasize that I think we need to get kids in for one-on-one or small groups as much as possible in groups that can be easily distanced and meet under a tent. And I know that that can be frightening to think about approaching, especially, you know, for, for teachers who've been isolated at home for months now. But it can be done. Earlier this summer, I orchestrated the reopening of, of the preschool I run in Gill. And so I've been living and breathing metrics and data and remote reopening, or reopening plans for months now. And we were all nervous here about reopening. It was frightening, but we got the supplies we needed and we changed up how we did things. And we opened completely outdoors and did a half-day. And we made it work. And it was so valuable for the parents and the kids. We completed the summer program just now with zero incidences of sickness. So I've seen that it can be done, and it can be fun. And everyone was cautious and careful, and we didn't feel like we were in danger. It was so good for the kids and so good for their families. So I know it can be done, and I, I hope that we can think outside the box to make it happen. I think leaders of in-person groups would not necessarily have to be the classroom teachers. Maybe there would be a group of teachers who'd be willing to raise their hand and say, I would do this. I would teach under a tent, eight kids, you know? Or I would, I would oversee the remote curriculum that the classroom teacher, who is remote, is, is laying out. So yeah, let's just make this work, people. I mean, we, we have to be doing this for the kids. That's it.
Thank you. Diane?
Sorry, grabbed my wrong mouse. I just wanted to echo a little bit on what Haley said without actually my ears echoing from feedback on Zoom. We had a really successful summer program. It was smaller than what we had originally hoped. 14 children, we had four staff, two paraprofessionals, two licensed teachers, and 14 children under a tent with all of our masks, with sanitizing, with protocols. The children were incredibly happy to be back. The teachers were happy. And I think in working with Melissa Benardzki and working with Christine Lamoj and my administrative colleagues, I felt like it gave us such a nice kind of opportunity to build our capacity for delivering services in this new order. And as much as it is very different for children to be seeing the adults and their, their teachers and to be, and sort of be doing school in a different construct, it also was incredibly positive. And I think sometimes we underestimate how adaptable children are compared to ourselves as grownups or full grownups, or mostly full grownups. So I'm still working on that part, but, but you know what I'm saying? So I just, I just had to say that. And the program was finishing this week, and it was just, it was really positive. So I know Bill had said wanted to hear something positive. It was a great experience, and I'm sure Christine Lamoj could send you lots of pictures and share more because it was something to be celebrated.
I think if I could just for a minute, I've sort of tried to keep fairly quiet. I think it's, it's been a pretty much a roller coaster thinking about what and how and when. I've been doing my best to read everything and look at everything and get all the data out there, which totally contradicts each other depending on what study you look at and when it comes out. And it, it's really enough to make your head spin sometimes to think, well, I thought I knew that. And now there's a new study that says they don't know about that. But I think it, it just proves sometimes why it's, it's certainly evident that people can have very different opinions and base them on very reasonable ideas. The other thing that's occurred to me when people have asked or somebody suggested was, I'm sure the administrators have already been thinking about how to make the introduction of the year's teacher to the children work remotely or however that's decided. In, in particular, children who are going from one building to another. I know that from when I was teaching. That's a big step, especially for the younger children going from one building to the next building. And I, and I'm sure already the administrators and I'm sure the teachers are thinking about that as well. But I just would like to get that out there, that that's something I'm sure will be considered carefully and done well, so that students will feel comfortable with the beginning. Brian?
Yeah, so I'm pleased that Joni Menard has offered to take the lead in recruiting some high school students who have some film experience, and then also tapping into the high school mentors, the student mentors to, and then looking at their, their transition programming. We had this as an agenda item for today, and I love that idea. So she's going to reach out to those students and we'll all get prepared to put together some type of little presentation for their buildings.
Did I see another hand I might have? Heather?
Mike can go first.
I can't, can you get a little closer to the microphone?
Yeah, I don't know why that's happening this time. I said Mike can go first.
Okay.
It doesn't, it really, it's no difference, so I'll just.
Mike?
Okay, well, I know there are concerns amongst our constituents about the reasoning behind our decision-making. So I'm, when I say this, I'm not picking a fight, I'm just answering a question, and it's an important and legitimate question. But the reason I made the motion is our educational. I think this is the best move for us educationally and for the kids and institutionally because I'm, I'm not prepared to look at our, and by saying this, I'm not suggesting that anybody else is. This is, I'm just talking about my thought process, I'm not comparing it to anybody else's. But I, I'm not prepared to see all of our staff as sort of the price of doing business. I know that there are a lot of people that look to the schools to be a facilitator of so many other institutions that are in deep need right now. But I, it's not our job to fix the economy. It's not our job to fix foreign policy, and none of that is our job. We are willing and eager participants in all of that. But that activity needs to come from the appropriate source. It needs to come from the leadership in the Commonwealth. It needs to come from federal leadership. Right now, we need to be practical about what we can accomplish with the resources we have. And so just making the point that that's, that's why I am advocating to start with the remote model, because I think educationally, while we've been very clear that there are drawbacks to all of these models, but I've, and, and just to be clear, I've been following the, the pandemic or the disease since I fell ill with it. I'm no expert because everything keeps changing every day, as has already been stated. But this is not, I just want to be clear, and again, I'm not being defensive about it. I'm very comfortable with my position. And I think people have a right to know where this is coming from. I'm not being affected by YouTube or, or social media. I don't do Facebook or any of that stuff. I've spent a lot of time looking at the factors involved here in the district, and that's the source. And again, I'm saying that not to try and impress people, but people have asked the question, and it's, it's an appropriate question to ask of elected officials. So that's, that's, that's the source of my reason.
Cassie?
I'll, I'll be quick because I've already kind of said my points. But just for the sake of transparency. Can you hear me okay? There was one student that did get ill at and was quarantined, just so that everyone's aware. Could you hear me?
I didn't hear. Who's Tina? Who's this speaking to Timmy? Hello?
Cassie, Cassie, to repeat what Cassie had said, she had indicated that there was a student who presented with symptoms at the summer school. The protocols were followed, and there was no transmission of the virus. But there was one student that, you know, we had to communicate with the family. And so we got an opportunity to test the protocols. It was great to have Melissa Benardzki there because she had just trained everybody and everybody followed the protocols and did what it was that they were supposed to do. So I think that's basically what you said, Cassie.
I, I apologize. Apparently I muted myself without meaning to, so that gave you a break. Hi Haley.
Hi, yeah, sorry if it was unclear. I was talking about a different preschool situation.
Yep.
When I said there were no incidences.
Yep, we were referring to the summer school here. I'll find that, so thank you.
Anyone else? Before we take a vote, we have a motion, we have a second, but we can have more discussion or questions or comments. The motion is made with the parameters that the superintendent has set forth. Okay, in that case, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate. It may be a little tricky here to see who and why. Let's see, one, one, two, three, four, five, six. Timmy, do you have a vote?
Yes.
Yes. I think I see seven yeses and a no's. And one no, that looks like the right number, we have eight people. All right, and thank you, and we certainly will revisit this at every meeting and keep up with it. We are just about done the agenda. We don't have any minutes to approve at the moment. Agenda requests, Brian, Cassie, and I have done a tentative agenda today. We've added things that people have suggested, and we'll continue to update on all the issues that we said we would. The dates of the next scheduled meetings, before we decide whether to stay on Tuesday or shift to Wednesday, that's been suggested, I just need to reiterate what I just need to reiterate what, um, we talked about at the last meeting. I think there was some confusion in the community from some comments and some letters that felt that the, uh, school committee was not willing to meet in person. We did try to work it out so that we could meet in person. The issues that we were up against is we've been able to have the Zoom meeting and we've been able to make public participation possible this way as well as having a link so that we can have an audience listening in at the same time. If we were to, uh, transfer to in-person meetings at this point, we would not be able to do those things. We would not be able to, um, accomplish them. And that seemed as if that would defeat our purpose of being available and making our meetings as available to the public as possible. So at this point, that is why we shelved that concept. So we're looking at regular meetings to be held on August 25th, September 8th and September 22nd. The superintendent suggested we might consider Wednesday night instead of Tuesday because that's when we are apt to get more information. Is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, and that would probably begin September 9th. I just want to be able to follow the, the dashboard with, that has the town by town data. So that, um, it seems to be consistently coming out on Wednesday morning. And so I feel like that just gets us closer to a, a clean case count. If that's the metric that we're gonna be going by and making future decisions.
Okay, in that case, it looks like our next meeting will still be Tuesday, August 25th. And then we can decide then if that still looks reasonable, but people could be considering that when you're looking at your calendars. To see if Wednesdays would be as workable for people, if it would be easier or harder at this point. We'll discuss it next time. Anything else for agenda requests or anything before we adjourn?
Jane, Sabrina, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, just prior to the motion to adopt, um, the superintendent's recommendation for remote learning, he had reviewed, um, an item about the remote learning. And he, I want to be clear, was it September 8th that they will be reviewing data again? Did I get that correctly? Is that a yes?
Brian, you're muted.
Sorry, yes, Sabrina.
Okay, perfect. I see no. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, in that, Jennifer?
So we'll, we'll be talking about remote learning next time as well. Do you have any questions or anything that we might want to have before September 8th? Just want to clarify that it'll be like a continuing agenda item now that we've decided we're gonna start remote. I think that we need to really, um, have a, a, a more lengthy discussion about remote learning.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable and that Jane, we can talk about adding that to the agenda as an item of discussion. In particular, I was hoping to focus on, um, you know, needing to talk to Diane to see whether or not we could have some of those contingency plans ready to share with the, with the committee as, um, draft, in draft form and discuss those, uh, or not. So Diane and I will talk about that. So that might be the best place to start for the next meeting and kind of target it down. So that, you know, we don't want every meeting to become 70 people wanting to make, um, comment about something that might be controversial. If we can get it down to trying to make things work and discussing the individual plans. I mean, the thing that I like is starting remote on the 14th. If we're reviewing on the 8th and data looks good, you know, maybe we are, maybe we're starting to go some form of hybrid or some form of in-person within just two weeks of opening the school year. You know, hopefully all of our stuff is in by then and we're ready to roll. And, you know, it, I think it's really important to, even in starting in this place, to hold out hope that we can get there very quickly. You know, I take Heather's point very seriously that, and I thought it was a really valid point, you know, and, and I know, member for her family saying, asking that question that we've all asked, if not now, when? Well, we have to answer the when part. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Bill made the motion, Mike seconded. All those in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
All those in favor say bye.
Bye. Thank you again.
Thank you, Jane, everybody.
Night.
Night.